It's six o'clock, it's time to call the Shreve City Council meeting to order is May 26, 2020. At this time, I would like to ask a censure prayer.
Thank you, Lord. Father, we thank you and I that we have so many things should be thankful for. Mainly for your protection and your provision over us, Father, we are so grateful that none of us, family members and others that we know very, very well not been sick with this virus. For those that have, we're certainly grateful they're full of healthy recovery. Pray for doctors, the nurses, the caretakers, the janitors, all of those who work in the hospitals, all those who are under the gun day after day after day. Our police officers, our firefighters, our EMTs. Father, there are so many people on the front lines right now. And we're asking for your divine protection for every one of them. Our city, our city fire department, our city police department, our mayor, our employees, Department of Defense, all that work in this city. We're thankful, God, for the wisdom and the guidance and the direction that we're in today. Pray that I, Father, you believe us as we conduct your business here in this city. Father, we will understand that this is not our business, it's yours. So help us to be thankful and respect all those things that are important to you as we conduct the affairs for this city. We exonerate for it in Jesus' name, amen.
I would like to give this to the light of the United States of America. As we remain holy, the which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 Uh, approval of minutes on a regular meeting on April 27, 2020 is Frank Scott. Somebody needs to say.
Um, there was a change made before the meeting, but this is those. Um, I don't can't handle it. I had to try to email her, but my email didn't work. The chance to work soon, video conference, but the great event, I think years have passed, I might not have been.
But there are few seconds. I'll say this. Again.
Um.
I. Harmon. Brooks. I'm Williams. I. Sanders. Brother. I.
Alright.
You showed that company, so April 20, 25 answers. While we're on this coffee, Angela and I are very excited to announce that we received our sales tax at the end of last week, which would have been March collections. And they are actually up just a little bit from the summer. So it means that we don't know what April's gonna do, but this is for March. We'd like to see the face, so very encouraged, not gonna go out and buy a lot of purchases, but uh, this is why we're very encouraged our sales taxes maintained. So just wanted to be able to share that with you and um, this is so. Are there any questions regarding how you wish 20, 25 answers? There are many other questions, advertising, promotion information.
We did meet and it's um, Friday, if anyone has any questions. Yeah, I've got a question on it. Uh, on the minutes where you talked about the hundred and sixty-one thousand, where it looks like it was a little bit of juggling where it was there was money allocated for the splash pad and then it ended up being switched going to the greens.
Well, what it was to the hundred and sixty-one thousand that A and P allocated to pay the parking lot at the splash pad. And discussing that with the mayor, she said they really need to come out of bond money. So instead of taking it out of bond money, or cheating out of the budget that A and P used to get a bond money, which pretty up to hundred and sixty-one thousand that was made available to the greens, but in the end, that was not what the greens renovation cost.
The only, and the reason why I asked about this is because at every step of the way, when we were doing the A and P bonds, um, I asked, and it's on the record, I actually went back and looked at the videos and so forth, to double check, I'm sure. But I asked at every step of the way about the Harmon Pool renovation is supposed to cost a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that would have helped the ventilation and the lighting situation up there. And at every postmortem meeting, I kept asking every step of the way, is there gonna be the money? Is there gonna be the money? And every step of the way, I was told yes. And then all of a sudden, I was told, no, because we needed that money for the splash pad parking lot. But really, we needed the money for the greens.
That's not true.
Well, it, the splash pad parking lot had already been allocated out of the A and P fund.
It should not have been. It should have been out of the bond money because it was in conjunction with the splash pad. And everything for dealing with the splash pad should have been out of bond money. So that was our call when we were working on a bid on a shooting on the budget in advance. And we allocated that money towards that when it should have been out of bond money. And Darren is here and answering any questions if he needs to, but we did not spend a hundred and sixty-one thousand on the greens. And that money that we did not use went back into reserves.
Because when I was looking at the minutes, it said that originally it was two hundred and fifty thousand in the budget for the, the parking lot for the splash pad in for Shreve Forest. And then instead of the minutes, that some only needed a hundred and sixty-one thousand. And so the rest of the money was allocated for the greens out of that two hundred and fifty, the rest of the money. And that was in the October minutes. So then that was what eighty, eighty-nine thousand or whatever for the renovations of the greens.
Correct.
And this, so then the rest of one sixty-one ended up being allocated, not all of it, because still that was quite, so all but how much did most of the greens, like forty-something?
Correct.
Blood break. Okay, so there's still that not purchased sum of money, there was still potentially a hundred thousand.
That is correct. It went back into A and P reserves. And that, that any, it's just like the city money, any money that we don't spend from our budget, it just goes back in our reserves. And we will probably spend it this year for sure, you know. I haven't heard, and I'm not saying it doesn't need, I haven't heard anyone mention about renovations of the pool for a while since time. But what I remember of it was they were prioritizing projects. And I can't change that until two, three, but I will say this, there wasn't enough bond money to keep the huge street entrance to the tennis courts and soccer fields, which I feel like was an oversight too. You know, we should have made sure that we worked with better than that. So to save all the money, um, as the need, or with as many as I covered other things, we really didn't have enough to do all. This, I feel like the road for the greens that led from the blue building up to um, the entrance. Yes, so I feel like that, that we should have, or that it should have been completed as part of the A and P budget. But that's just my thoughts. I remember what Bill Spocky said, never promise anything because you don't know what's gonna happen. And so, and that stuck with me. We said we were gonna try to do three things, splash pad, tennis center, and soccer fields, and anyway, came down to it. There was a lot of change orders, there was a lot of things we ran into issues at splash pad that ended up costing more than we could imagine. So, and I would just say, invite you guys to go back and look at the videos because or I voted on it, I made sure that that was clarified every step of the way. And, and I'm bringing this up because the Swerve community feels um, let down because they were asked to support the bond issue, of which we absolutely did in return, just asked or if it's given something that was relatively small. So maybe as y'all are going forward, as you have plans, maybe that's something that can be considered um, in the future, so. I know there were several projects that we listed after the parade, one being that project of expanding the wall out of the Swerve Day, and archery range, disc golf, there's several things that were talked about. And I would love to say we can get some more money and do these things and hopefully, maybe in a year or two, we can. But those other projects, I'm maybe speaking out of turn here, but there, those other projects are not forgotten. That grab is.
Right, they're not. I would love to, but I would have to agree that, that in parks and recreation meetings and things like that, I think that was a part of the conversation, but in parks and recreation meetings and things like that, things your son did uh, this indicated that if we had money that's owed from three main projects, he considers the pool, the next project, to be funded, get any money by those. Like Kevin Archer, he had any of those projects, he considers the pool, the project to be funded. And it has a whole lot more to do with aesthetics and aesthetics or uh, room or anything like that. So the yard preparations in the pool has a problem with ventilation, thanks to nature. And making that wall grass, and then you open it up to the out pools will assist with ventilation tool, with uh, uh, the problems that we have with seating, who will think that maybe it will help take some of the load off the decomposers and things like that. And that's just one of the reasons the sun got like that in the fourth project. And we're just talking about, you know, basically taking that wall out to make it glass through windows. And so being a money-saving project for the city as well, because it's gonna have less, you know, his sunny impression of it would have less, you know, service costs on decomposers, like that, that's what he talked about. So uh, I would agree that it felt like if we had money that's owed after the parade, that that is the next project. And I think that is sort of the impression that he felt like he's giving, we have the support of the Swerve community. And I'm sorry to conceal blackface in this way, but I do feel like it was always that the first three projects were primary projects being funded by the bonds and that it was if any money was owed then, we'll go on down.
And it's no secret that the facility was owed to us too. It's, we're about, we're about to, we're about to spend some of this money to, we spent some of the compensation there. Some things are just, we're just kind of mandated at this point. So we are gonna be spending some money on a eighteen-year-old facility. And that might be part of it because um, anything that's that age and as much use as it gets, it is gonna have to have some money spent on that. Any, any other questions? We will be meeting the first Wednesday of June in person somewhere sometime, so I'll let y'all know. So the Service Commission, Parks and Recreation Committee.
We did not meet. Uh, we will have to meet uh, next month. Uh, we're definitely on track. Our regular meeting time is the second Monday uh, at six PM at Goodland Recreation Center. Um, I'm not able to claim about where we'll be. Uh, the maiden, uh, we'll see, and talk about A and P being over at the uh, new uh, tennis center or something like that. Maybe we'll, if the weather be pretty favorable, so we'll be out there on tennis. We'll figure that out.
Darren, would you, do you have anything you would like to add or say to your group tonight?
Uh, I think you're supposed to come up here and.
My Darren's coming up here. I would just like to announce that Darren is gonna be on the podcast. Yes, I'll end this. Thank you. But what I want to say is before Darren Christmas, I have been very, very pleased, and I think in power staff has getting job there and his group have done during the last several months. This has been a tremendous time of community changes and challenges. And it's moving today, especially in the Parks Department for some of the challenges. And I've been very pleased and we've been great to work with and everybody has just had great reviews. I think people that you worked with are very happy and so I just, I think it's great to um, give you the opportunity to live forward with us here at the city. I think you've done a great job and your record has proved it. And congratulations and we look for great things to happen.
Thank you. I'll come and cheer you on if you're struggling or anything like that. But Darren, Darren's on the ground. He's been there long, he's been there long, he's been there more, and Brad, uh, the performance, I mean, he's really stepped up.
Snap.
And uh, it's uh, really, and the situation where we needed somebody to step up, you know, he's really stepped up. And, and at the time, and uh, I think it's hard work, pays off. And he was, he was most deserving of this, right, right now.
Darren, I also want to say, I appreciate my mayor action to that being the utmost club of board members for their city, maybe a couple months ago, but a few weeks later, we tried to make it all online. Uh, appreciation, and you've done a great job. Sorry for our hold.
Well, I don't have a whole lot to go over here in this town. I don't do the right thing.
You say your leadership.
Okay. Alright, so to give you an idea of what's going on in the last month right now, uh, as you know, we've got a lot of things going on. Whole lot of them got shut down. We're getting ready to get them back open. Uh, but every decision we make affects another portion of what we have. Uh, for instance, the other day, we got the opportunity to open up new sports, they put the swimming, they put the baseball, tennis, whatever, tennis center opened today, but that race came out a little earlier. We still can't have group lessons yet, but we can have individual lessons. We've had a few people have some, since we've moved home range out. Uh, but the June of first, it was like the, the goal is open up this piece one. What we're doing is working with the utmost club, or the shark club, or the sarc club, we've golfed and trying to figure out what we have to do to provide an opportunity for kiddos and segment. Golf, that takes a lot of. You see the directors coming out every day, there you go. It's, it's a lot going on. Um, the HRT opened up last week, but it ended out. It's been at the previous six, well, uh, we had three hundred and eight checking in the last week. Pretty good to consider our population. About, I guess, a hundred and fifty. Fifty, about fifty-six percent of these people that checked in last week were over the age of eighteen. Now that's surprising, because everybody said, hey, look out if you're fifty, sixty, seventy years old, be careful. These people are coming, they're all over, with no grammar, come in and work out, they'll take their business along. They love it, okay? So we started making this, we swear hours on it. And we'll keep getting there, we'll be opening it back up as long as we can do it, it's the same one.
Darren, can I ask you a question off the command? Is it, are y'all looking at all at, um, you know, right now, you've got to be sixteen and above and you've got a lot of kids that are looking, that are like elite, that are swimmers and there's no place for them to swim that things. And a lot of the, the centers, in fact, most do allow with that parent to come in, you know, sign the waivers or whatever, so that they can actually get to play this train, going into the rain. I didn't know that would be an option with someone.
We're looking at it, but I don't have an answer yet.
Okay.
We're extending, and we're looking at our options, we can't cut there, you gotta get the meeting back and move. That's it. And heck, dude, it's like, you know, we, I don't think anybody really has that answer. But what we're doing is working on these things and shoot them in the really big way and then go for it. That's what happens with any activity. But that's because once we get the experience, we'll, we'll know about handling the next. Let's see, so last year, the same way last year, for instance, we had a thousand and eight check in that go on rest. And that does not include sharks, that does not include actual program, that does not include pickup basketball. But right now, we don't have any pickup basketball. There's no equipment, there's no sharks, there's no beach, it's simply check in. So you're looking, that's about one player of what we gave ice teams this time. Well, what are the, what are the things that are going on in the restaurant? What's the requirement for three percent? Well, we're, we're here, we're looking at, like, Seymour, the boom. The boom, the thorn of boom, and the splash pad is planned to open June fifth. That's where we should, we should hold that back a little bit, we should have opened this last weekend, but we didn't have sex, couldn't teach that. But we have any, we can pledge that much faith talk, and our country to hire, we can start. Uh, but possible, possible, June the sixth, we have a first term of the fall. We'll see. There's a lot of things going on with that, determine the record, is currently working with the department deal. How do you submit that plan for over, you know, people, here's a pick, he's working on that. We'll see. Um. So what we still working, before then, we're not finished, we're at the summer camp. We're going around to the basketball, soccer, we should shoot them out a little bit. Soccer club is helping, so they said they don't want to play soccer in the spring, starting the team back. We're still working on dirt classes, we're still hard, we're not sorry those back there, but we're beginning. Dirt classes are swimming, or doing dirt classes for tennis or even golf, not doing dirt crew golfing. Road classes, I'm sorry, those are weird change. So if you have anybody that's asking questions, I feel free to leave mine, I'll talk to you in a proper. If you have any questions, please do shout.
I'm looking at one. Were you getting racist stuff, correct? What about the outdoor playgrounds? Cause I've had several questions on the outdoor playgrounds.
Right, we are looking at opening those up at the same time we do golf. So if we're ever gonna need that go up to first, because we have playgrounds at Quokka, it can't really go as well, so. Hopefully, we need that go up to one, that'll have all factor. Right now, we're trying to get scared of it, I don't know how we're. We sent those ones on today, well, wherever that waiter, Davey, for the order, trying to raise some sat facts, but I think.
Darren.
Yes.
I've got a question, the, the things that they have like at Walmart, I mean, there's the beach tubs, and pulling out the lights. Is it possible to have some of those kind of displays and some of the red? I think I could, where a parent connected, hey, they could actually buy one when I saw them, get their car. But just for safety, if they get asked right now, what their child is, you know, like, you have that hill hunter X here, you wipe that out and put them in, and use it, right, and use it. So I didn't know, if those kind of stations, are even feasible, how costly do they?
It could be possible, if you put them in the pit that, and they'll hold it another. Oh, they have twenty-something, twenty-something playgrounds in the world, though. And before this whole thing shut down, I cleaned all that, and jumped all of it. It would be at least a minute, it could be possible. The biggest thing I know where it does is litter, let's be honest. Uh, who's been a charity like a lady, you might. Well, I saw it off over there at work, we were still, it wasn't in the park itself, I was down inside, I was driving a car. Oh, there were so many masks and gloves on the ground, it was, I don't understand. So the big, the big question is, it couldn't have, it's also a lot, but it isn't working at that moment. Just, we should put up a sign that says, hey, go spray your own stuff, or we said, have a favor.
Prefer a sham washing. It, you know, the other thing too is, you know, they, they come out and said, now, um, it's all services and beauty light is supposed to, sunlight is supposed to be also something that kills it. So, you know, daily they keep coming out and changing things. I have had calls about, um, there were rumors going around, I don't know if it's true, or that Indian head cool is not gonna open, and fairway pool may only not open. Um, a little concerned about that, because if it only had a fifty percent occupancy, it would seem like we would want more opportunity so that we're not causing a scarcity and then people not being able to enjoy our, enjoy the facilities.
Right, you're correct, uh, especially right now, with all the going here and splash pad. And the reason why we're only open those two right now, that is, right now, we have not had the one class, uh, to teach like that. And so, given the circumstances, we're not gonna have to have more staff. We will, but I think if we just, all everybody thinks, yeah, keep a clicker, maybe for the acts of action, or the director, we're gonna have to have more staff, that handle. And how many, how many guys have a sixteen or seventeen-year-old that wants to build those, I guess, that's sixty apart, like. We're gonna have to show them, so, so answer your questions, right now. Fairway needed, they had to open, but we're looking, we have to close it this summer. But right now, we don't have.
Right, and it's, it's even gonna be more complex than that because uh, forty-two percent, if you're existing family group, there's no need to such distance. So you can't expect these kids to be like, I don't want to go apart, well, we're sitting, so we can use the same car or our cousins, and, you know, social distance. And at the day camps, um, that they have, or the, we do awareness and VA and so forth. You can't keep the kids social distance apart from your siblings.
Choice may be there, or all these things, oh, they hit out these cards, and are you appreciating your own way there?
Darren, I don't have much left of your report, we see that a lot of.
And he's making up to do it. You know, resources, maybe.
We would not need, um, as only, you know, the, for you to search and charge your rent for your units, or your private, you know, we weren't creating the same charge figure. She is a great, she's been there four times, she kind of talked through one thing, we had to go on, and said, here's the time to get to sleep. Uh, she is. We, uh, she's got fingers out for our joint directory, so that's working out, so, uh, we. So we are planning on meeting, uh, this next, uh, uh, month, uh, show, John, and we get that fly. Uh, there's, she, they're all she heard.
I'm sorry, do you have something you want to say?
I do have a question in our line of office, I want you to answer. Today, when the governor, they did, they had to do, somebody had a question about having them forced, the social, and he did, he did directly. So my question is, maybe for legal persons that cannot do the city standpoint, was you posted signs, maybe the law partner at the pool recommends that you stay six feet apart, but we're not in sports, you know, we're not worried about the president, you know, riding in the car, would that take the owner, also, as the city's direct here, and then up to the family?
Then you get people posting pictures on Facebook, like the golf course, and then brothers, and posting that, they're saying, you know, my social risk, I don't know, that's. And she said, that's a legal question, um, City Attorney.
Well, we're, I think what the governor is suggesting is a just good, uh, suggestion to rule, I don't think that he can apply or expect that to any more than just echo this suggestion.
Right, but obviously, Darren, we say, you know, there was a comment about having to have sixteen-year-olds, tell adults, hey, you're not six feet apart, is that our job as a city? Or you posted signs that, these are the city recommendations. If you choose to get three feet apart, that you've made that choice, but we posted, this is that strategy.
But maybe if we, I agree with that, if you posted the report that you thought, like, right, the comment, once it's been adopted, that's what we're after, the, and, and, and.
Well, I mean, just maybe back on that, you know, just watch the news and see so many things that will crash our, we. One of the things that happened last week was, you know, the, the enforcement of distancing and then wearing a mask for, you know, the places, and that became a really big burden to, to those who were trying to open the facilities. And I don't think that at any point, we want to have the, the ownership or the responsibility or the liability of, to use another term, of having to be, be enforcer of social distance thing or, or wearing a mask, or whatever the next thing may be. And that's a pretty thoughtful task to bear, and this to have, or cure owner, or whatever. So, uh, I think you posted a sign that, that. Uh, I think you posted a sign that, that, you know, a lot of April suggestions, to show, you know, the recommendations of, you know, the city sure would, and I think that's probably pretty, uh, pretty prudent. And, and at least, uh, you know, show that these are what we expect out of that architecture, that are parks, and stuff.
That is, that is, and that's a part of recreation, things, and stuff.
We're, we're, I agree, I agree, but I think there's a, there's a thin line in between, between ownership enforcement and just taking prudent action. I think there's one thing to say, you ride your skateboard if you're on this, on this skating park, and you break your leg, you're on the block field. And another thing to say, you don't violate these protection requirements that you're on this, and if you don't, you don't got, the, the, those lines, you're in danger, speaking to your life. The risks that you're taking when you expose yourself to those last things are higher than the typical risk that you're posing when you violate warnings, you know, the active warning that we're gonna post in those situations. And I just wonder, if were to me, that, you know, we want to be standing in front of, uh, which one of us wants to do one thing, if you stand in front of a microphone, a camera thing, you know, yes, we're sorry that, you know, uh, it's our rule where this COVID nineteen outbreak started, it killed me, one of the people, uh, but, you know, uh, they're on call, they didn't follow the rule, I, so, we're complaining. They're on call, they're on time, they didn't, they didn't follow the time, and so, you know, we watched our hands, we watched our hands, and, uh, but, you know, it's, it's, uh, nobody wants to be the person that stands in front of a microphone, say, you know, and we already had the school party, and they're on, they're on, they're on, or a school party, or a sale somewhere in the state or at all, where, you know, local people that contracted, uh, contracted COVID nineteen, that did, so know that these rules, that these rules, example, is best. But on the flip side of that, I think that is why I think everybody, or I think wanting to do specifically, is we just shut things down, protect, we can't shut things off, that. So, you know, what we did, we just go to time, we go to time, and also had people crying, and all of them moving. And they didn't jump over the counter and visit the COVID alley, they were lying, they said, you know, uh, please remember, so that, as I walk, please, maybe, please, you have time, so, now, it's quite a sad, I think.
But they also followed, too, I saw your posts, they also viewed it, too.
Everybody, everybody, all the workers, they had masks and gloves, everybody that was there, you know, the workers said, and people, but I think that, I would do something like that, where any business that, that speaks to strong workers who make a point to walk around and say, ladies and people here, so that this can thank you, thank you, and things of that nature, and to do a, a, a kind of alignment, that, that already. And that's, that's what we, what we're planning to do, you know, we're, and, uh, our lab workers, we, we're already gone, and we're here for, for different, flash and that. We're gonna set up designated seating area, and that doesn't help them, they're, 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 and there's a Google app sign, so, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, like, start that, we're gonna make some designated brands, I believe, that. We not shut off, but, we are, but I think we're gonna, uh, if the thing is, with the Will Harmon, immediately, I've been heading for one of these.
Very, in this case, the other cities, uh, opening up on their pool, they actually had this, and they did live bars, so, persons, are you gonna have your, were to set the live bar, or they're gonna all be trying to, you?
We're working on, um, I love that live bar, it's possible, but, don't let us get out of reality yet, uh, so, we may have some other part, however, uh, come back, and be yours, for, for.
Right, no, unfortunately.
We're gonna be, we're, uh.
And this one, are, are, that are called here, who, that are called a pool, that, uh, you know, the, I've got label one, but I was trying to, before, you kick out to the next, and they didn't, they ahead, and that, others, you can, you know. What, what happens in, that I bring three children in my neighborhood, so we can, and, uh, me, so, I understand what you're saying, and that this, we have that, that health bar. And I understand what you're saying, it's in there, don't let, so, these kids can't play here, they, they, they come together, they, they, but I, too.
I interrupt a moment, I'm getting feedback and not in the room. And you can be heard and understood well because you're speaking loudly and clearly. So if everyone wants to try and speak slowly and as clearly as you can because the room itself is very boomy to the people watching on the live stream, so that they all will be able to hear.
Great, thank you.
Mayor's approval, there are three items. A revision of the planification, a revision by my head, and a report calling up an I or C or E course. A resolution to make the conference a plan.
Hope you heard that, I'll tell you. There's too much game.
Just talk louder.
Game then. About that. The first thing I would like to say about the government, I think, is that the planification was brought to a halt at this time. The second, I decided maybe we could have the business back up to the level of video. And then response to the first place, the one you didn't have, yeah, that moved a little bit, a little bit long. But we're all going to do that. The second part, maybe you didn't pass, was I had a slightly decided to tend to. Back in March, the planning mission had a public hearing on it, because of reason. About a half acre parcel just off of the plant, the plant of the cycle, a land of justice. Just the US of America, so. And based on the information presented to us, we had the consistent plan this way. And recommended that the council approve and resume. As I was getting ready to prepare for the next council meeting, I discovered the con relation that we had on land use on this plan. So we were basically making a decision based on land use on the farm. And I decided that we had full method that we need to be making those sort of things on our plan. And what we're seeing up there, the current plan to save the area between that light thing, that's basically wrong. The purpose of that, particularly the land use side, is to provide a transition between the higher potential to the Marshall, all of six, seven, one, six, seven, four, two. To the residential areas with the rest. This parcel was, just like I said, was just off the US of America. And the land use farm, that particular lot, is showing off. And what they want to do, what the, the purpose of reason was, was to provide parking, open space parking for roadside by road. And so we decided that what we really needed to do was ask the question, should we revise the land use plan? If that's done, we'll get it closed. During the conversation, we did a number of conversations, and started to go through my sense, not only to change the land use classification on the land in the primary, but also to extend that Marshall way across to the existing department. Instead of moving a small pond. And so, the motion to land that we adopted, land use plan, changed all of land use, circle line from Hollywood extended to the end of the pond. But that's a change in running, but a change in an area that makes more exciting, more logical working. That really has to stay close before we have any set of knowledge. Well, I decided that after the change of land use plan, the council had offered a second act. The founder of the horrible land that we're changing on the land use plan, and that was the change of land use plan. We proposed the document, but they did not give the record of the change of land use. So they got, where I could, uh, uh, published.
Where was it published? Isn't there a user letter sent to John Rocke, or has it been written out of page?
Well, the reason, yeah, it was, it was, I mean, there's no requirement in our ordinance that it will not change your property's proposal in the land use plan. So that, you know, in the future, if you want to reclaim your property, that actually, you know, might be, it might not be, you know, in other words, I don't own the property out here. And I know that the land use plan shows that I'm actually doing it on purpose. The city don't change the land use plan, but it could be far greater than that. And I don't know that I did the record of it. There's no requirement that the city did the record of it before the land use plan came into effect. No, I thought what we had is, we had a point to do something with it, but what we're trying to do on the side of uh, we went back to the exam, whether we should do that, so then, and if we find that appropriate, we'll argue both and we will definitely change the plan, which is best for the government, to use the land, uh, pay. Anytime, as the term was on, I'll run, just a ten grand, I'm gonna change, I don't like, I don't want to say impact later, if I can manage, I apologize, because of that, you know, I'm with that, I'm with that. I apologize. So that's the problem, so we should look at, the value, uh, of, uh, we're going to change. Probably on these things, they should, uh, publish, uh, change, uh, the, uh, the career to change. Or go forward.
And John, you want to skip out?
We said, no, no, that's not, that ain't cheese with no one.
Are there any more questions, folks, do they?
You did.
Resolution is over.
I'll say it.
Aye.
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 And what is the official building design for the first? That's what we go back to, that's our name. Or this is, is the reasonable request, that we're not having it in March, that the goals from the last agenda is that we have a space home. Uh, like I said, if, if black will, uh, or if.
For the state, how about?
Or if, uh, essentially parking, I think, tends to call it on south, particular parking. Like saying more on C three?
Sounds, sounds.
And, and the reason, like you said, that I hope for, is only to express it, is only to sample it, going to pull. That's when basically, John, Hollywood, uh, Hollywood, three, like, uh, the.
Mr. Milton, did I hear you say that Hollywood is not actually causing a particular moment, so that's big?
Yeah, right. I say that it's called three, my first, and there's not a part that on territory, there's like, uh, no exception, that the church owns property, a mansion on that, that's all that I feel. I said, we were saying, no problem, that's the four.
Questions, please, Milton, we spin the rules of place on second reading?
Second.
Aye.
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 Father, I.
Aye.
The exact woods that killed us on all of the projects, even the development. Everybody's on high because of that, the soiled conditions in the past. But they are, having done work on the emergency road, it will be completed before the bridge is closed. And when we know that the road will be closed, it will be ready within, you know, two or three days or as much as advanced as we can get, we will post that on both sides. We'll get a sticker. Brian's ready to, we'll get a sticker that goes over the closing soon to put a date on it and say closing on a certain day. Coles Road, obviously people have been looking at that and almost getting bored with the fact it's not going to be strictly into wet conditions. Whenever we get dry conditions, we're confident that we'll get that road completed and open up. Country Club, the utilities are studying how they're gonna make their relocations at this time. The design for that is a fifty percent point. The Maryland Lightning Project, which is not part of all this, but it's certainly very important to grant a long time. AT&amp;T has their contractors on site. They've installed a lot of the very infrastructure and pretty soon they'll be switching their service to the new, to the new equipment. And we'd be asking probably in a week, asking the department to put that out. The Maryland Extension, which is to construct that portion which is not built. We're a hundred percent on the design and we are negotiating with property owner to make sure that we get the right way as it should and that everybody understands how we're gonna go forward on that as far as future development with that property or road can build. There's several others that have been built as under design. And Jacksonville, we're talking with landowners at this time about the railings and about block portions of their land. Form a new right of way. So we're talking with the landowners.
You have any idea? A lot of the bad people were missing things happening.
Yes.
Just an idea, when you might think, I'm just going to let you know too, when will they see?
On Jacksonville, specific renovation activity, relocations, utilities will be the first renovation see that happen later this fall.
But it probably will dry out. On the Country Club project between Beverly and Deaconfield?
Yes.
And I don't know if everyone in the council realizes that because we haven't really discussed that. We never came to a conclusion on that on the project. But you're talking about widening, ripping out the road, ripping out the works and others for one foot on each side for aesthetic purposes. Is that, that's what was said to be, when we asked the engineer on the budget. He said that was the only reason for it on barber. So is there between, I'm ashamed from Beverly on that. I can see putting a turn lane, but we just Sherwood Elementary School. But from Beverly to Deaconfield, there wasn't an actual engineering reason to widen it only one foot on each side. So.
The reason for the consistency of how you do this?
Right. So I mean, and, and just to note, widening the road does nothing but increase the speed in residential area and when you like kids crossing and pedestrians crossing. But in terms of consistency, that's not going to help in terms of fishing more people per city. It's, it's an aesthetic thing so that it'll, it won't come in at all in the right amount. Correct?
I can't say specifically with that, if that's one reason for being consistent with the lighting facility, that does not confuse the drivers.
My opinion too, had something to do with relocation, storm drain?
Well, storm drain just particularly from Beverly out to.
Right.
To other on that road and that's the majority of the new drainage under the road is, that's all that does.
Thank you, Richard. Yeah, what else?
If the, during last round of meeting, we had a session about the ordinance regarding wheel devices. And there was a consensus for amendments to the federal, you've had some comments that you've made. We did amended, altered, amended ordinance. The subsequent to the meeting, Angel, I got the check in and while we had submitted a session about how to change it, there was never a vote or a motion made to adopt those amendments. So the ordinance that you see in your package tonight is actually the amended version. So before I read this, I'm gonna ask for a motion to substitute this version of the ordinance for the one that I read as you made.
Can I add a further amendment to that as well so we don't have to do it again? You want me to add?
Well, essentially, you told that it don't, Charlie, it's a motion to substitute. Is there a second one?
Yeah.
Ah, Harmon, Brooks, I, Williams, I, Sanders, I, Robert, I, Philip.
In ordinance establishing rules for the operation of wheel devices within the city of Sherwood setting penalties and violations and rule declaring diversity in front of persons, that's per three against amended.
And I'd like to offer a further amendment under section three at the end of that. When you've got, a person may not operate a wheel device in the neighborhood, mineral, or any of the roadway, the going to details on that. I would just like to add to the degree not already legislated or Mr. Pug, if you feel that it would cover whichever way would be better in state law.
I would agree with you.
Um, to the degree not already legislated in state law. Because as I mentioned before, there are already laws in terms of bicycling that are covered under state law. So therefore, we're not putting something that already goes against laws that are already in place or we're not adding to it. So a lot of the negligent biking is already included on that in state law. So instead of changing it all up, we just add that to it and clarify.
That's a good question.
Yes, sir.
Can I add to this in your own? Last month, we talked about, when we talked about danger to the rider themselves. And I fully understand the need to control wheel devices when they're getting interfered with cars on the roadway or personal property. And my question is about where it says so as to be a danger to the rider of the device. That, that's my opinion because I don't feel like we're called to make ordinances to impact what some of the personal decision is on their personal wheel device. If you're damaging my property or if you're getting in public roadway, that's different. So I just would like to take that out. So it would just read, negligent means operating a wheel device in such a hazardous manner to others present and/or in such a manner that causes life damage. And if we wanted to add or cause an accident on the roadways, I just want to be real careful trying to manage what other people are using on their personal property. It might be dangerous, but we're not called to.
I thought we took the first part of the year.
Well, it's, it's, well, under section three, Charlie, it's got a parking lot and I don't know if that should be public parking lot? And then it says sign of park property. So should that be public property?
I think April confirmed the definition of that, correct?
Yeah, it's a public parking spot. My, my edits were intentionally intended, number one, negligence intended to be measured. Not, I, I didn't intend when I made the change, this was the best I could, first off, the best I could think. I had a lot of problems with the ordinance myself anyway. And I was just trying to calm it down with the original. And negligence is intended to be measured. I'm not intending to, when I put that in, I wasn't intending to regulate what somebody did or somebody was trying to, what they were trying to hurt themselves in the health of this child to be measured. So if a police officer or somebody said that a person was hit on their bike or skateboard or something like that, they could use as a measurement if it was hazardous to themselves, hazardous to the president or hazard for them.
Could we still measure though if we just take out hazardous to themselves?
So if you struck, if you, and under negligence, you could strike out in an hazardous manner. So to be danger to others and strike out the rider of the device.
I just would hate for, I would, I could call the police and they could get a ticket for, you know, this twenty-five hundred dollar fine. And if they were riding in a negligent way, to hinder a child. And then you could go to this point, yes, you can take it then. And I don't think that is what our intent is, but when I read it, I think that's.
Yeah, I'll say that as well.
So add that to it, that's my amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion to add to the three on our installation by state law at the end of section three. And in addition to that, a request to remove the words to the rider of the device.
Yeah, and strike out or.
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 Rather than the last four.
And then Charlie, do you want to add the word public parking lot and public property? Or do you want to legislate people's private properties?
Yeah, I guess.
So we can add public to those two, those two places also and then uncover that.
You know, talking about Timmy's church. Because I mean, I, I agree with the way it is. Because that's, that's, it's, it's not public, the public ministry of that church, the skateboard is stuck under a church. It has to be used as a pass whoever's there that's already in the building.
Stress, I see that.
But I, I agree with the way it is.
Stress.
Yeah, and it's also destruction of, of property too.
But you're, you're, that's all I'm saying. So the issue was, I wanted to give the people a little bit of teeth there. It's impossible, they can't get a misdemeanor, but if you have a seventeen-year-old kid being a dirt, now you got a misdemeanor on the record.
We can all learn from that.
But I, but I think.
Well, what I think, you know, and I don't want to put words into you here really now, but if you get responsible, the, the only thing they can charge them with at the time was a misdemeanor. You know, in this case, they get written a citation, it's not a misdemeanor, it's not a felony, it's a, it's a, you know, hey, you go through order, pay your fine. So without, without something to give them to go to the force without the misdemeanors in order for them to take action on, on a given situation, then it would be a misdemeanor which is really not.
Which one, why are you emoting?
You know, really, because that's the only thing that brings me about this sort of, I just like, oh, like, because I don't have to go to jail for it. You know, for killing three of my wives. But it, even me, it's like, you know, I have to straighten it. So that's the, that's the whole, I'm.
Yeah, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about April.
It's still like, I don't know, it's just, it's us, other than what, what Kevin said, it's really us clearly interfering.
I'm afraid that it was one.
I'm afraid you made a mistake.
Yeah, yeah. I play the big government, but I hate what I'm doing is, you know, that you're a person, this is it. And I would choose, I would hate to be that police officer if you're doing that. But if you're cheating, you know, hey man.
This doesn't exist every little carrier, right?
But I don't think it's any, I want you to do.
No, I'm sorry, so that's, that's, this is not an alternative here. You know, I think I've had a conversation with the city, we're on roadway, we don't know that. And most of the, the, those who did not choose to comply, I mean, this will be a method of term or enforcement. And it's one of my brothers, not my ex-wife, but my recollection that the issue that brought this to the council briefly was not a child. It was a, it was a teenager or older death. Okay, so it's like, I think we all have our same opinion about, we don't have a parent who knows a child. But the other hand, these devices are not intended to children. And I think a lot of people get pulled over for striding their car, wrong, too fast, whether it's any of them. I don't think we're gonna be in harsh appeared.
No, it's me at the city, as I said, I, I do not think I'm a police officer. We have, basically, we have to, that is, yeah, I don't know, I feel more comfortable not exporting this if we had an alternative in the flying cage stadium facility that we talked about, you know, UZAS.
I see, you can lay both of them up, then.
So, so the way, way that's stated is, you know, with all my fellow council members, it is, is, is a, you know, I don't know if you call them step one or step zero or whatever, but when you give an alternative to get, get a handle on an issue before you have to go to a, a, a young person and the man they go to for misdemeanor charges. You give the option in front of that, that allows them to see, you know, the serious, seriousness of, of their actions without putting a brand on them for, for the rest of their, their, their young life or what that is. That's the way I'm feeling. Again, you know, there is a scenario that's, I don't know if this is going on since we've been in self-orms taking or during the pandemic, but you know, there's, there's an issue that continues to happen over and over and over again that puts, you know, others at, at risk, others in just the rider in this scenario. It's been witnessed by many in the neighborhood and for, for whatever reason, there's, there's kind of an uneasiness about, you know, trying to enforce something upon, you know, the person. And again, it's often with Chief Fairwell because I really don't have, and I'm God, he used to arrest and disarm people who dissmear. And that's really not the desire of the police as a, as a first step. So.
I will second that.
Megan?
Aye.
Aye. Ah, Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Aye. In ordinance establishing rules for the operation of wheel devices within the city of Sherwood setting penalties and violations and said rule declaring diversity in front of persons, that's per three against amended tonight. Those are the rules placed on second reading.
Second.
Megan?
Aye.
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 Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Aye. In ordinance establishing rules for the operation of wheel devices within the city of Sherwood setting penalties and violations and said rule declaring diversity in front of persons, that's per three against amended.
We would suspend the rules placed on third reading and second.
Megan?
Aye.
Ah, Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Aye. In ordinance establishing rules for the operation of wheel devices within the city of Sherwood setting penalties and violations and said rule declaring diversity in front of persons, that's per three against amended.
I see an option.
Megan?
Aye.
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Robert?
Robert?
Aye.
Philip?
Aye. There is a reversal clause.
Megan?
Aye.
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks? Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Robert?
Aye.
Philip?
Aye.
I believe on the next one, it's seen with, there's been some conservative measures not noted as a monthly charge. It's a fifteen cent increase per month at those collections, households we claim in these recycles, I would agree. And regardless of whether we had thought passing this on to our listeners, SPM passed the contract that we did agree to, we were paying that. So that is the cost for twenty-nine. This is simply whether or not we are going to base on that, you can't cost monthly to a resident. I just want to clarify that.
In ordinance increasing, we pay for weekly residential garbage and recycling collection, declaring diversity in front of persons, that's per three.
Mayor, can I ask a question there? I know the chief of the, in the, we started to shoot off something. Has there been any contact with a voice management? I think you're on that talk for this one.
I'm asking just for the name. It's, I have a rotation if you.
Yeah, that's all.
He would, he like, um, as this indicates, the contract is March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And Waste Management asks for a proposal. If there's going to come a time as a city, we're gonna have to decide if we want to continue with it, if we're gonna pay the increase. And so Ryan and I will discuss this, try to lay this out. This is what the solid waste issue will be reviewed against you maybe. So we're gonna get some direction as to what the pleasure is of our, you know, government bodies of each city if we want to continue with this or, you know, regardless of who wants to revisit it, we take a chance and other here, everybody can see if we get it. But this, this is something that I've been, I'm honest, that I asked that she look at this and just give some thought to it and there's not much of a market for the stopper. So I don't know, it is a tough situation. So, you know, if, if we were discontinuing it, we would have our parents uplaying some people's bond to go backwards and not moving students. There's supposed to be costs to it. So I appreciate you looking into it. Because I, I'm sure as all of you guys, I've had so many complaints about, you're watching, put it in anymore. Because it's like, you can't put any, I should stop, I should reduce the testing. If we're gonna renew it, we either renew the contract or waste management or rebid it. And if we're rebid it, as noted in this, some office here, a new vendor provider will hack it out of trucks, you know, additional containers. So there's going to be some cost for them. The struggle's gonna vanish if you want to continue recycling to stay with Waste Management and the contracts. And they did this proposal with glass and without glass, you know. We still can't remember in mom household was supposed to be in there. You know, it's very confusing because it says recycle, but it doesn't mean you don't have a payment. So if it goes to the payment, then mine, I'm the rock. Anyway, I would ask that you do this if that, that, and I'd like to have your feedback on that. Or reach out to Ryan on my stuff in one. But as I mentioned, this fifteen percent, fifteen cent household per month is already something that the city is already, we start ran out of harsh one, clean one.
April, April one.
We can't ask, we have to act, the ice line to residents, we have to. Are they going, this won't be a great show out there though, right? Not to the residents of the population. Going down with the, that, that hasn't been the intent.
I don't, I don't think there's any way we can, once we notify the five central Arkansas water, it probably won't take thirty days before they can even add it to the table.
Mine's going to have somebody's own, my wastewater.
I'm going to suspend the rule of placement on the second reading.
Say it. Megan?
Aye.
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Philip?
Aye. In ordinance increasing, we pay for weekly residential garbage and recycling collection, declaring diversity in front of persons, that's per three. I'm going to suspend the rule of placement on the third reading. Say it.
Megan?
Aye.
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 Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
In ordinance increasing, we pay for weekly residential garbage and recycling collection, declaring diversity in front of persons, that's per three. Move to the adoption of the rule. Say it.
Megan?
Aye.
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Um.
Robert?
Aye.
Philip?
Aye. There is a reversal clause.
Megan?
Aye.
Aye.
Ah.
Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Robert?
Robert?
Aye.
Philip?
Aye. In resolution authorizing the mayor to sign amended one, the consent is straight to number sixty-four dot five and programs.
I am going to ask our city engineer, Mr. Ray.
In a letter dated in April twelve, two thousand eighteen, from Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, now abbreviated DEQ Division of the National Guard. It was written to the mayor and it had to do with executing consent in Ministerial Order Number All I've Asked Eighteen, Execute Three Eight. And they were including a copy of that signed Ministerial Order, you know, it was a break for two thousand and eighteen. And that order is an agreement between DEQ and the city for the payment of the negotiated and reduced amount of two thousand five hundred dollars filed penalty as well as entering into a contract with consulting engineers to design improvements to the north wastewater creek plan in order to install equipment that will allow us to maintain discharge limitations that are required. And the limitation in particular that we have been seeing with the munking. And then munking was due to build up material on the bottom of basins, one and two. And those two basins, the equipment was not able to actually turn, which would mean spurt the material at the bottom of the basin. So it was occasionally picking up material that was high in the munking. So we agreed to it. We went into a contract with Chris engineers, we installed improvements, everything completed. The improvements are working great. We are maintaining our discharge, we are staying within the discharge limits. And amendment number zero, zero, one, that the Ministerial Order is a paperwork exercise of DEQ orders. I don't mean that disrespectfully, I understand. It is to make sure that what is put out to the public for their review, which would be that the city, when it took a agreement with DEQ, we executed all the improvements. And now this report is going out to the public and it will be posted for thirty days for their review for any comment anyone has to this. And in order to make everything consistent in that document before they publish it. They want four pages of things added or changed to that document. And it has to do with correcting, we had alcohol number two on effective date, the renewal permit responded, ceases discharging alcohol. It seems like this, they're simply catching up details and making sure that everything that is placed before the public for their review and all happened. If you authorize the mayor to sign this amendment immediately upon that, DEQ will post all of this report on their website for thirty days for anyone to make comment. So there's going to be time for people to make, you know, comments if anyone has to comment. They put this call straight forward, they put, they're much better driving information. So it's, there's no money attached to this at all. It's, it's a. And again, that's all I can say about it.
No, they will give us additional, similar, not penalties, but formal strings under that. No, sir.
They already agreed that, what, they already agreed that.
Excuse me.
They already agreed, it's fair, that's prior to April verdict deadline of twenty-twenty, she said this would be.
We did make the death practice.
That's the question.
Let's move to the council.
Move for adoption of the second.
I'll say it.
Megan?
Aye.
Aye.
Harmon?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Philip?
Aye.
All right. Mayor, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, plenty of business. And way new business, um, to fire department, or you should be fire district number five. We all only have two fire departments within our city. And while chairman of the fire commission, number five, is number four, I would like to go ahead and just take this opportunity that part of our discussions have been in the last several, last, perhaps last year, councilman Harmon will go over and maybe they're aware of two, because we want to be a city of eighty thousand, right? And so I think one of the steps, I think most of us would agree, to becoming a city of eighty thousand is having a municipal fire department. And so time has come for our especially to move forward. Um, county commissioner Brooks would like to give updates on activity that fire district number five is getting this time. What do you think, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I like.
The record of Congress, the government control, and alcohol control, the fire protection.
You have to speak up. Tom, they're, they're not going to be able to hear you, you got to, for the state. Could you perhaps hold the microphone this, explain councilwoman Harmon and that would be down, hold on.
Check your board?
Yes.
See, uh, in the state order, it's all about a hundred, it's about a thousand seventy seven fire departments. And all were rated from one to a ten, about ten, fire department thirty one and about twenty five, which are rated to two. That's extremely high, in which the city can be very proud. We are funded primarily by two sources. An assessment that's led, led by the fire commission, uh, which is closely on the, through by state law, and by substantial payment by the city of Sherwood. Now, I can give more detail to that, but I think you're aware of that. In a significant point out, the Sherwood fire department is debt free and most fire apparatus is relatively. We're currently operating on three fire stations. One in the extreme southern part of the city. And most, uh, uh, of course, one ranked above, one among seven in the high school. In the last fifteen years, Sherwood has some stability to grow. And that growth is particularly in, uh, in the area on the east and west side of Rock. Uh, most of this growth anyway, to, uh, to ensure continued excellence in our fire service, this distance required a station which is closer, uh, to the area that, that we grow the relation. And two months ago, three months ago, as director of fire department, I appointed a committee, um, and I'd say a fire board, a fire commission, uh, myself and, uh, Mike Anderson, because he's a long time been on the fire commission, actually worked with Chief Parker, himself, Milton Sherwood, and then a non-member of the commission, member of your city council, uh, council member Kevin Little. Now, the reason we need excuse to fire department, this changes like this where there's three stations, four stations, a city station. The way it is now is in millions of dollars. It requires everybody to work together. And so I knew that, uh, Kevin is also a friend of who in the council would shoot straight, and I want that. I told our commission, as little will say, that we were involved in paper of everything we were doing. She's the chief executive officer of the city, her highest office official, and she didn't go to throw them on. And she transferred all of that down with us up there to weed, to, uh, shop this word please. As we begin to look for replacements, uh, to let you.
I received a message, it says, ask him to send back a step or two.
I'll be sending her back for long.
Sure, I do.
The, uh, anyway, the input directive that the mayor gave to us was actually one of this saying, it's a feast for the future, regardless of what will be, for the tire department is a sergeant. And then he somewhere is standing, waiting, or very ecstatic, waiting to the neighborhood. And of course, we agreed to do that, but all lengths away from that. But we walked through a number of departments. We started out with five places after walking through woods and everything else. We quickly changed that to three. Uh, I can tell you why, I don't know why, where we were at, and such as that, probably. And then we finally got down to two. Now, we're still talking to two, but on that board up there, you will see a little, all of you have those out there except Jim and Charlie, I think, that I gave you when I walked out with, uh, the members of the council. But you'll see that wood section, uh, there, areas in the left corner, that area where somebody has a point, that would be, this is one area, I guess that I have this information because that's all through this business, maybe which engineers that draw all this stuff out. And you'll see a road that goes all the way down to the right, there at the name of that's Rocky. Uh, you'll see a road that makes a tournament that's not exist, uh, that could at some point end with the action of the man. We have a price on that one, so we made it, and offer a tenancy law, a tenancy that's subject to suitability. So that doesn't mean, uh, that we're not looking at other things, but we want to give the price. So this is a good time to buy a land. Oh, I always wanted to mention, uh, mention to this, then two of our committee members helped us a great deal. With George, I think he's been today up here with, some of the staff went through and came back for people, old people like me to be able to look at it. I had hours, far stuff, so partly like the size of this that you set out there on. But that helped us know what the business was. In all seriousness, we have to get a fire station in the north part of the city regardless of what you guys know. It's safe like it is. Right now, um, we're in a unique situation in one fire departments. I think it works, it's good, but it may not be the way that the future matters. Fast, they're waiting at some point, that's the main changes. Then I also wanted to mention that the reason I have that one up there is, uh, London Jones, who said, and that must be a seller here. Who works in planning on ringling it. You don't believe he's just saying that it's geotech. And so he's doing it, so right, hurry. Mainly because his wife's on board and he can't pay, so it has to be, sort of like that. So that'll help us all. Now, if that was ringing a little bit, I tried to make some written comments, so I could kind of go over that. But the main point is, is we have to get coverage in the north. Our rating is based on that. It's not that people aren't getting a big service now, that doesn't mean they're planning for the future. You have to go over that call, play along. I'd be glad to answer the questions you might have.
I have, I have a comment, and, um, what I would really like to see is maybe certainly on this room, and I'd have any residents and the two representatives, but I think it's time for us to sign love and let's, these two fire departments merge to become an invincible. I know ground rich, the ground rich communities of the border is in favor of merging. We will not merge, they're in favor of merging if you take the next second go mention. Whether we have to do the merger in invincible or we can just go straight to invincible. But I think it's time for us to get there. And now whether the fire district purchases property or not, that is the obvious of the body. But I would like to see some planning done to where our entire city is calculated as the best locations for these fire departments. Because it's open, it's our taxpayers' assessment plan for it. And so I feel like that we owe it to our residents to make sure that as we plan and fire company, that the entire sequence of Sherwood is, um, included as we do that planning. And I, I think all of us agree to that. Um, I'm certainly open to how many of the former committees, men would be talking about it with different ones or several months, probably a year or more, I have a councilman, or, I had a conversation, um, city attorney, I haven't been invinciblely, we've asked for legal advice, we've been trying to find out the ball and save you, not, 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 the law is kind of somewhat unclear on how we could do this. I was, I know with Sherwood and a lot of the city in Arkansas that does not have an invincible fire department. And it works great, I, it is working, we have great coverage. But it is time for us to move forward and, um, be unified in our fire service. We have two fire chiefs, two fire boards, and, um, I think because we do run so smooth, most residents do not realize that. But it is time to move forward and become one unified body. So I would be certainly open also to any suggestions or how to best move forward this council committee or how you want to do this, which needs to get, which needs to move this match on.
I'd say one time that, that I, that I know you have, the way that, of course, the Sherwood fire department has always been interested in the merger. Fire departments is now not much.
The fire district.
Fire district. This unique situation here is where about a mile and a half between where Sherwood runs up to Hammersworth, where the swamp, until we get to the ground rich fire department. So the, the short answer to that question is, if we were merged, if we make a zero difference where this, where this, where this is or the other one is. Because you don't build a fire department in the middle of the swamp, because it's close to Hammersworth. You try to figure out where there's a bunch of.
But there's also overlying service series, so.
Yes, ma'am.
That, I think, I believe you have a comment too, I seem to think of first, no, I thought you.
I was, I was agreeing with you. Really see.
I was gonna say, I, I also know that, uh, you've been working with town and metro plan staff for some time on the mapping to come up with locations so that you don't have any overlapping in that we have this huge swath of our city that doesn't have the distance coverage that the other part of the city does to, in, in, you know, what time and effort, I know, and I really appreciate all the work you've done. But, I mean, just to say on, on Tom's behalf, he didn't just go out willy nilly. He worked with mapping people and so forth on a much higher level to figure out on the ISO where would be the best possible location to get the most homes that are currently not covered and are already covered. And I, I really appreciate that. And I, I do agree, I read, we definitely need to, any last wishes, so, I mean, this has been going on. We want, we have great ISO ratings, and we have great performance, but we need to move forward with that. And so I would really like to hear some, the next few days, do these suggestions.
I, I think it's helpful. And also with your staff here, mayor, the, uh, where they came up for locations, and they were sent to the special plant, it was good to help. Uh, but I still can't stress, even though the, the, that the merger of the fire departments or the city taking over the one fire department, would make no difference in whether this station, these, you know. The thing that's important about this station is this may take a very, very, very long time, and I think the, this college even believed in that. They have such a counter.
We need to order in a way, need some enlightened enabling legislation.
Yes, sir. Yes, that's what I'm trying to, the fire, she said, well, if you're able to do that, so.
It's time to get that.
That, that, yeah, you might be able to now.
Mayor, I'm going to, of course.
Yes.
Uh, I just ordered, uh, in the, uh, fire district workings and the way you plan out tactics and things like this, that different people have to pay for. Our church tax, this city event, four years ago, it was four hundred dollars in fire tax. Now it's twenty four hundred dollars. And we need any notification, we need anything, we just gotta deal with two thousand dollars in our property tax situation, so we will pay property tax. So my question is, is there going to be kind of a cap on this or, or big properties from starting to make bigger money?
Exactly. Heck, we have a catch, five, the deputy fellow, I'm going to bet that much, but we buy, you know, the, the, uh, but this becomes a corporate, but I will answer your question. What happened with respect to the churches? Churches are not a museum, they're like the buildings that get on fire and are put in now. And so the guy that does all the assessment for us said we've left out this category for churches. And, and by the way, we're having the same issue ahead, which is school, I think, you just mark on that. Uh, and you got that set up, because if Philly's still armed down, they have to prepare one. So that if you're not being assessed any higher than a non-church or, or a non-school, business would be assessed. It's the fact, assessments are major, and we're zero, right? Because they just mashed up and ignored it. I think the school and city, we opened several years, and that don't work on that stuff. But the, uh, accurate why? Now, I actually want to know why it's ridiculous and we should have.
Was this something that was county law?
I'm sorry.
It was the county law, I mean, I, I had a call from another church also, this six registered, the councilman, the minister referred to. Is that something that the sessions were in, accurate county law?
Uh, well, there's a certain mechanism for cheating upon the fire district, for those that have sessions. Many of them have them correctly done, and many of them didn't have them at all, I mean, this is since, since churches are a museum. Maybe that applies to the session, if it's not, by the way.
Oh.
They really get not to, uh, correct.
But the change in building the churches, was that a result of the revelation that the session that I did done pretty at county level? Or was it something fire district five decided that they need to start charging churches? I think that's why.
Right.
Time to.
I've been done everything, was it in the area? Well, we hate the place, why, but it's definitely, I knew you'd say that, I, you know.
But was there a discussion, a, the fire district need to start charging churches from the.
It was what I'm going to, I'm going to be, that we, we neglected to do that and should do it, and we decided to do it, yes. But I will just answer back in a longer answer. That is something that some other business, church is a business, uh, can challenge. And while I raise a higher application, I'm sure charging this category of people. So the board decided to operate under what it appeared to be existing laws of fairness. I say that somewhere cultural, I thought.
Well, here's my, here's my thought on that, and I'm, and I don't need to, I have a church in fact, and we're not having a problem with that. But I will say this, just because you have a larger property, which we do, a larger property, doesn't mean we have a larger obligation. Therefore, when you do start paying in these higher categories, uh, if you have a lot of building, understand the concept, understand that, and all that, but I think we're going to have to be some kind of legislation to require voters through the, um, cavity that takes into consideration of the size of a building plus accreditation, because if you get a small accreditation, they're not going to be able to put on.
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but that might happen, because they call, they'll, they're, county proceeding, regulation. I don't, I don't give a, that's a fair necessary way to work. I don't know much more about it.
Tom, back, back to the, the fire station, and I don't know if everybody here realizes it, but most of what they do is actually medical response. And you think about when somebody's had a heart attack, that response time, or they're laying there unconscious, that, you know, response time. So I'm like thrilled that we're going to be getting, um, something to cover that site in town more efficiently. And the help of those response times, and I, 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 I love and, and would love to be a part of trying to create, go forward, some type of solution in terms of, uh, the two station problems, so. I think we, we would need, um, and welcome suggestions, but this stuff I have, it's not, it's not long with it. Or even for you, but maybe our representation, each board wants to be involved in it, and the council, I mean, there's going to be a lot involved. But, um, we got, we got this on it, so, um, the northern area, this is all way too long.
When are you planning to move forward on that night purchase? Where do you go?
Well, I actually moved forward in the same way. We've got a price with the board of fire and women seller pending uh, whether it will work for a fire girl on that piece of property there.
Once it's said.
Now, the hard thing about this is that we, the fire commission and our board is diving on this. We have enough money to pay for it. And we don't have a million or so that will take the bill to develop. And that may need, and I strongly argue that there's, there, the merger of, of the Gravel Ridge Department and the District five don't have a thing to do with the best location for a new fire department. I strongly believe that. Now, so whether you decide to leave your municipal fire department, that's, that's very significant time on your part. But it really doesn't have any, I don't think we can wait too long before we get into some issues by not getting that fire station started. Unless they're gonna be an overnight.
But there also the location, the existing fire station in Shorewood, Scotts and um, if that was relocated to the proper location to, to service the area that included land, there's some, every time we have a new station, I'm not saying we don't need new stations, every time we add, that's a huge staffing liability. Those are things that have run by a long time, land and residential, we can't write more damage. They're gonna come back to us, wanting, and it's our, it's our structure, the residents, all of us. But to build it, and then we've got the staff willing to order that. But the staffing is we got to make sure, that's why I want more people called from someone from land and let's get this fire department. So I'm gonna be a day with you. They come back and say, man, we should relocate them to different areas. So we don't, we want to try to learn from the nervous states and let's, let's get the right operations.
That, that was purpose of my question. Was the purpose of there's, are you gonna sit and wait till we make a decision about merging, back and what? Are you, are you in a position?
I am.
You say, we're gonna go by the land and add any more?
I am in a position to do that. Because that's the, the devotion by our, our commission. Our commission is united on this at this point. Now that, if there were something in my mind that I think Linda's mind, I think the other three people minds, that we need to wait to do this, we would wait. Because I'm certainly uh, uh, agreement that the cities decide what you do with the fire department. My strong argument is, it makes no difference whether you merge these stations, take over, you have to get that fire department started. And that's not the, the long-term thing. And also, Mayor, as I mentioned, the three station versus the four station still doesn't have a lot to do with getting this station uh, out there. And, and since I've said that's an argument that we can, we can handle the council. I'm saying yes, okay, and it would. And I'm not gonna be some cattle ever if I've set up a commission to force that through without having some people that pull a lot of it from there and from this council. Because you're gonna have to pay for that, whether it's three stations, four stations, I'm not crazy.
No, but it's, it's future liability. Having divisions being long for a lot of the, you know, and I have a phrase pointing that out. We're talking about, we're talking about capital expenditure versus long-term liability on those additional salaries. And long-term liability is, is a much bigger concern than the one-time capital expenditure going to that station. I mean, one time, yeah, you try to check the station bill. But long-term liability with salaries is a bigger concern. Because we, once we write that check, that one year, we're writing that check from then on, because we're writing checks through the local council station. We can write a check for whatever expenses we have off of that for those long-term liabilities. And that's a concern. Those other three stations, whatever, the, you know, three, four, four stations, we've got those in the future. We've got those in price. And we have plans for those. And I think if we're gonna start picking up those liabilities and, and as we continue to grow, it's gonna be three stations. We have three stations on the road right now. Whereas if we continue to grow, it's gonna be four. And then it's gonna be five. And they're always in the process. And I think the chief's right. We need to be looking at taking these on. And this means if we're gonna own, if we're gonna start owning the assets, we might as well own a whole campus. And if we're gonna be paying the long-term, taking home long-term liability to employees, it might as well be all our, they might as well be our employees. It might as well be our.
I'm not gonna scream. That's not, I think it might as well be.
But I hope everybody realizes you've got, you've got Rockington Road, Stone Hill, Miller's Crossing. All those areas are not properly covered. And we're all paying, and you're bored, and I'm bored, the same rates and the same tax base as those areas that have been covered for years. And this, those areas have been covered properly for years. We have been with our taxpayers. We can't continue to wait. We can't, like, we talked about, you know, who wants to stand up for a microphone and say, gosh, you know, we had an incident, we couldn't get to that area of the town fast enough that somebody died. Come on, let me sample one of the.
Let me help clarify. Say that I.
You have a source.
Let me say that I do think people, people certainly getting in service. And one thing that Linda found out in your, in her study of this, which we talked about the mile and a half, uh, that are street miles, not air miles. But she also found out in there that it, that that rating is also based on response time. And we do not have the capability of living that company, running that security. We don't have staff up there to write them the, the fire departments as fast as what time it arrives. That's still by default. Most cities probably don't. Little ones does that. And by that response time, if it's two miles of response, because you're going down Rocky, people or something, it's a long way. You can cover a bigger area. And that's something that's based for a city. Now, certainly you make a valid point of expense and future obligations. But if you keep the three stations, then you have necessar, other than the place, you have a necessary three stations. Now, most.
I like that.
It, that, and if you have more, most cities outside have more than three stations.
What's that more?
Well, you're kind of in Gravel Ridge and I, I.
I always.
You know I'm a part of that, so I make this argument. There is a huge gap between Shorewood and the Gravel Ridge area. As I showed you, we all showed it, almost a mile and a half. So you're really looking at, even if you merge the districts, you're not really gonna change much where the fire stations go. Because you're not gonna build a fire station in the middle of that creek area and not in the council.
Gravel Ridge already has a big part of the home, the whole building, or the center service area. So I'm, we're not trying, these are things, and there's gonna be some discussion like this. And I think this is the correct time. This, this needs to be discussed. I personally, I would love to see part of that, folks, the sales tax that we passed in the fun, be gone and build us some new fire stations. I don't think our city has ever really had a brand new fire station, especially up to date one. And I don't know if we ever have into, that was my conversation.
The equipment looks pretty good.
And it's a great job. There's something connecting that all. If you want, you know, move forward or plan, I would love to give the United States some really, some new, like, fire stations.
But if you can get some guidance to different cities, we are prepared by each one. And we're prepared in, in the building and design for that district. We should, I mean, the mayor first pointed out that she might call that same duty, steady putting in a fire station. Because I personally don't believe we can wait a whole lot longer for the back before we see, before we have to get some ramifications, not having a fire station. That's what I think.
And maybe clearly those ramifications will cost taxpayers in result of higher ISO.
Yeah, I did. I'm kind of disappointed.
Right away this.
Mayor, are you concerned that if we, if the two merge and into the municipal fire department, that location would maybe not be, you're concerned that that's not where it could go?
We, our, our GIs person, the correct, Rick Dennis, has been very involved in doing some calculations. And I think that's through, um, that Ms. Dennis spent a lot of time with. Um, he's has access to some information that Metro Plan does. And um, it does demonstrate that if we locate the three current stations in Fire District five, we could have their, at least two, two stations, um, three, one at least. That we would locate those more strategically than we would have the coverage of the three stations in current Fire District five. And if I'm wrong, tell me.
And then also, but I think her question was.
This is a safe location. I'm not sure if it really is once Dennis has some, um, that relationship.
Yeah, Mr. Webb has a lot of experience in his time at Lululeah performing these same analyses for Lululeah Fire Department. And he just brought that experience with him. Uh, having this coverage, you know, while it had coverage, yes, he's analyzed that. The response time is something where we'll have to have more data in order to actually, you know, calculate driving times and other things like that. But he's got the most of the data information. Dennis has the most of the data information here. True, in fact, we keep that. So organizations now have to be putting information in our system.
When I was at the Fire Commission meeting where TAD Council came to the Metro Plan Maps and gave best case scenarios that Metro Plan had done appropriate charge for the city. Uh, he actually suggested where the Gravel Ridge Fire Department is now, even with all this, Indian Head is not covered. And you've got parts, new parts of Gravel Ridge that are not covered. So the suggestion was the location that Mr. Brooks has suggested for this one, you then change the current Gravel Ridge to smaller stations to spread those out to cover newer areas of Gravel Ridge and so that Indian Head area could then be covered with one that is kind of farther out down, perhaps Johnsonville.
Cut off.
More, more down there. But two smaller stations versus one larger station. They also look at potentially moving some of those, because you also have on the other side, uh, 6716, you know, back out where like San Antonio State and areas like that. There's three stations, four stations. It's still not gonna cover according to the Metro Plan analysis. Because folks, we landwise are as big as combine. We're big landwise, but population wise, we're not quite there yet. So therefore, really to be as covered, that's, that's part of it. But I know Tom's been working on this for several years on just the location with the neighborhood people.
I'm pretty good at firefighting. I'm pretty good at firefighting. I was saying, not covered. And everybody, if everybody's careful is covered, there's just certain people that are outside of mile and a half range. They are, mile and a half is required to have ISO classification two, which is, which is, like I said, is only how many fire departments and you can get around, look at that, that 25. Yeah, 25 of 1100 states, uh, fire states, fire department, so I have 92. Now, you know, ISO three, the distance is two miles or two and a half miles from the station. ISO four, it's worse than that. Everybody in Shorewood has outstanding coverage, that outstanding fire department. It's just, they're, they're not within that mile and a half range. So I think we should not use the term not covered.
Okay. Not, not covered as I was going to say, shall we second? On you, response time potentially, because once you get back into those neighborhoods, this.
The neighborhood.
It takes longer. That's some of our main roadways to prove that too.
I think our discussion is not, it was right that we've got a lot, we've got a lot of planning we need to do and uh, that we need to get moving on it. Appreciate you're up, Dave. Um, in a way of announcements, we were number 10 last week on census, um, feedback or response. This week we're number nine. So we are almost 69%. I think on that list, we're probably the largest city on the top 10 with response, right? But we can do better. So we're gonna catch our break and get another run. Um, Joe Pius, I believe Census Bureau has extended the deadlines for participation in census. So hopefully, as things begin to correct themselves from COVID-19, we can have some more against. It was not a great job with it. We had some regulations planned that had to be canceled due to COVID. But they spread that word and, and make sure that the council, okay, because we're talking about things right here tonight with the fire laws. We need the census dollars to help us to do what we need to do for the future. So are there any more announcements? Oh, yes. Thank you from Long Angeles. Another resident, Coth Avenue, a Mr. Joe Beachcock, who this, uh, been numerous conversations with our city attorney and myself. He is the resident that owns, or I believe in no parking signs, that is the ordinance, 2276 that was passed on COVID 2019. He is one of the residents and I believe it is impacted where he parks. He is called numerous times. He has come to a agreement in this neighborhood that he will not park in that area where those signs are. And he wants those signs, signs removed. And Shorewood, today, we are city attorney, that that was acted on through our council and it's not gonna be undone through our council. So do not expect me to move this time. Did everyone receive the call with that old next candle? Okay. So that's, that's what the situation is. And I thought a lot of the guys want to make an ordinance. It's about a figure of share. I've been under, but I'm not, I'm not sure that that reflected with all the neighbors. And remember, we wrote the ordinance for safety and regardless about when parking in the yard, he said, parking along that street is unsafe because of the hill. So the way I'm being with neighbors, it's made up to talk the issue with the safety.
I agree with you. I'd like to put that on the record. I'm just placing on, we just called my office numerous, numerous.
I already called all that.
Okay.
Well, I don't mind the idea of, 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 of,
White Morris. Right. I mean, the sign is. But what's a sign hurting?
About that.
Yeah. I would ask that rating is not to be around that. Any more announcements? We will not have any more Zoom meetings because you see how long this meeting was so hungry we together. And that this, this is over to our meeting. All right. Then we journal for a second. So moved.